Good morning. As you can see, I am not Glenn Webb. It is on the agenda that the welcome is to be done by Glenn Webb. I'm the vice chair. Our chairman, Glenn Webb, is at the NCACC County Leadership Institute. He will not be here today. I'll call our meeting to order and welcome all of you who are here and who are out there in TV land and all the rest of our citizens. If we'll have a roll call now, please. Okay, we will next have our invocation and pledge. And Commissioner McGlaughlin will do the invocation and Commissioner Garris will do the pledge with a nice addition.
Shall we pray? Our heaven Father, we come first of all to give you things. We thank you to God for this day. We thank you for our health, our strength, and God, we thank you for life. We ask that you bless these, your people. Bless the commissioners as we go into this meeting. Have it to be as you will. These blessing we ask in our holy name. Amen.
For the pledge, I'm going to ask my grandson Nelson Garris to come forward. He is visiting with us from Orlando, Florida, where he is very much engaged in the scouting program. And he is two merits away from becoming an Eagle. And he's going to be working on that project some this summer. So Nelson, how about leading us in the pledge?
Please, please. I pledge to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we do the approval of the agenda, we have a couple of additions. If the manager will do those first.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chairman. The two additions we have is, one is a special presentation for our just retired Call for Extension Director Mitch Smith. I don't believe he's walked in the room yet, but we expect him to be coming anytime soon. And the second one is a special presentation by the President and CEO of the North Carolina Eastern Alliance. And on this one, there's no action on the board today, just to hear from Mr. Chaffee regarding the activities of the Eastern Alliance. He'll be making a presentation to the Development Commission this afternoon. And then this item will come back to you for a formal vote on June the 15th. And on this matter, it's the county's continued participation in the alliance in terms of membership. If the county decides to go in a different direction, the alliance has to be informed by the last day of this, June 30th of this month. So we're trying to accommodate Mr. Chaffee's schedule. He's going to be traveling. Couldn't attend on the 15th, so that's why I've added him for today.
Where is it going?
Pardon me? Oh, it's going to be, I'm recommending you do it right after, right now, after the approval of the agenda, these two presentations. Again, you may have to hold off on Mr. Smith because I don't believe he's came in yet.
Okay, I will entertain a motion for the approval of the agenda.
Second.
With the adjustments. Okay, thank you. Okay, and we'll go with Mr. Chaffee next. If you'll introduce yourself and tell us what you do and one word or less.
You know that's impossible.
And I realize that, that's why I said it.
Scott, it's I'm John Chaffee. I'm President and CEO of a group called the NC East Alliance. We're a regional economic development agency. We now serve 26 counties in eastern North Carolina that stretches from Jacksonville to, over to Goldsboro, up the I-95 corridor to the state line of Virginia. And we do a number of different things, but I'm really here to report to you primarily just in terms of what we've done over the course, really, of this past fiscal year that's a primary benefit to Pitt County in working with concert with the Pitt County Development Commission. So we greatly appreciate the support and participation by Pitt County in the alliance. It's important to us, along with the 25 other counties that are affiliated with us. It's an important member, certainly it's a Keystone County in eastern North Carolina, no doubt. Its institutions are really critical to the success of the east. Can you hear me okay?
I need to pull that forward. Is that better? Thank you, David.
And in terms of Vitent and ECE, we're very appreciative in terms of they were early investors in the alliance and participating in with the membership on our Board of Directors. And so we've been through a process in terms of a transition over the last 18 months. And so now we've talked about we're moving forward. So as we make that transition, we still, we're in the process of undertaking our economic development and other related activities in terms of workforce development and middle school STEM or STEAM education. And I'm going to report to you on really primarily our economic development efforts and our workforce development and STEM or STEAM initiatives. But first, one of the things in terms of responding to requests from Pitt County is to specifically add entrepreneurship and small business development into our working document in terms of stating what our mission was and what we'd undertake as activities. We've done a number of things relative to that rather than just simply adopting a statement in our activities and mission statement. So I'm going to review just a couple of those. We've hosted and sponsored and supported the 2014 Eastern North Carolina Entrepreneurship Summit in partnership with the ECU Entrepreneurial Initiative. We had about 125 people attend that event. Overall cost was somewhere around $12,000 to $15,000 because a part of it was actually awarding prizes to business plan competitors. We had several different categories. We had people from throughout the region. Clearly, the majority of participants were from Pitt County, but there were a number of participants from outside. And some of those from outside actually won awards as well as a number of companies from Pitt County. We've directly assisted several small and entrepreneurial businesses that have some form of engagement at least with Pitt County. And I've listed a few of those here. I won't go into any detail, but they run a little bit of a range in terms of anything from an automotive-related supplier to an ag biotech company, an IT company emerging that's raised a half a million dollars, is moving forward, has three patents on their process. So we are paying attention to that. And as I go through some of the other activities, you'll see where we're also trying to address the needs and looking at opportunities for small to medium-sized enterprises. You might hear people refer to that as SMEs, small to medium-sized enterprises. On the efforts in terms of working with East Carolina University and Pitt County schools in particular, in this case, our STEM East Director Steve Hill has worked in concert with the university and Pitt County schools. As you know, we were a participant in the grant that was awarded by Golden Leaf Foundation of about $1.75 million to the university and largely benefiting Pitt County schools. So we've been involved in that process and we contributed both funds and in-kind contribution as part of the match requirement for that grant. And we've also continued to perform in terms of the component that we pledged we would undertake in, in working with the university and the, in the school system. And that is in terms of the placement of starting three STEM centers or STEAM centers in middle schools in Pitt County. They started out with ACOG, Epps, and Aiden Middle School this year, this summer. Steve will be working with the folks at Pitt County Schools and ECU on the introduction of STEM learning centers or STEAM learning centers, excuse me, at Cox, Farval, Hope, and Welcome Middle Schools. So the total will be to seven by the time we reach this fall. We also coordinate the training for those teachers in concert with the school system and the university. To be able to make sure that we're coordinated, I'll mention in terms of one of those STEM learning centers costs about, just the hardware and the software is about $80,000. That's a little bit more than what your annual contribution is to support the NC East Alliance, just to put it in perspective. But we all, I also serve on the ECU College of Engineering and Technology Advisory Council. That's certainly a council in terms of that's out there promoting the, the work of that college throughout the region and actually beyond. But part of the value of that is actually working in concert with the leadership and the faculty and staff of that college in particular with regard to STEM and STEAM. We've also met with, gee, I can't remember the dean's name because all I can think of is DIBA right now, but the dean of the College of Art and Fine Arts and so forth. So we do, looking in terms of making sure that coordinating activities with them on a very close basis. But the other thing is working in terms of the economic development, what most people think of economic development, that is recruiting companies are participating in, in terms of being able to get our name out in front of clients. We do that in a number of different ways. We did a form of a group called the BioEast Alliance several years ago. It was decided by the members of that group. They didn't want to affiliate in terms of that. So we revamped that. We now have what we call a life science cluster. I left brochures around your desk as well to give you an idea of how we promote our region. And we do it by actually identifying and targeting specific clusters, economic clusters, industrial sectors, life science, value-added ag, food and beverage, aerospace industry, the defense sector, and so forth. Because we think in terms of it allows us to focus our efforts, focus our money in terms of particular areas where we think our region stands a better-than-average chance in terms of success. And so we've done that in terms of the life science sector. We're working in concert, particularly with the North Carolina Biotechnology Center, turn to that life science because they've broadened their mission a little bit. Their grant funds don't go beyond the really core biotech, but their activities stray into, if you want to call it straying, into medical devices, pharmaceuticals, and so forth. So we're working very closely with them. One is on a thing called the Global Innovation Network that we've used to help connect ourselves, present ourselves to other life science sectors around the world. And the biotech center has been looking at a way to, how do they reach out? How do they go global in a much more effective manner? So they're joining forces with us and through the GIN, the Global Innovation Network, to be able to do that. They will be meeting when we go to an annual meeting called BIO in Philadelphia, that this, actually later this month. The other part of that value is not only attracting companies, attention from companies, but also is elevating the stature of our university. So for example, we worked with Kipping Key of the Department of Biology at ECU. We were extended an offer to identify a faculty member to go and speak to a life science conclave, if you will, in Krakow, Poland. We contacted the Biology Department. They recommended Kipping Key, and he was kind enough to be able to accept their offer. They paid his expenses to go. But it's, that's a matter of elevating and getting exposure for our university and making sure that people understand the research capabilities and competency that takes place there. Another element of that in working in the life science sector, if you think about the core components of that are the Brody School of Medicine and certainly Vitent Health. So for us, it's important that we maintain a very viable Brody School of Medicine. We worked in concert with the university in putting out information about that, adopted a resolution in support of the $8 million request to shore up the finances of Brody. They've been declining in terms of their percentage of appropriation from the state over the years. Part of that value of regionalism, I want to point out, is that it's, it's great and you can marshal the resources locally to be able to go fight that battle. But it's really important to make sure that the legislature, whether it's congressional membership or legislative membership, is that this is a regional, this is something of regional significance and regional importance. So we put out that word. We adopted it. We made it known in terms of what the issue happened to be. And we had a chamber, and I'll give you one example. The Kenansville-Duplin County Chamber of Commerce latched onto that and said, absolutely, we've recruited six, five or six doctors from the Brody School of Medicine to our county. Without Brody, we probably wouldn't have had that level of success. That's important to us. So they make sure that they incorporated that information when they approached their legislative delegation about the value of a resident, of something resident in Greenville and Pitt County. We support the biotech center again in life science. We're participating with the biotech conference or the biopharma conferences, could it be in Philadelphia this year? Costs about $6,800 to us. Part of it is sharing the cost of the booth, attending the meeting, registering for the meeting. And then what we do is we use that as a venue to essentially reach out to attendees, whether they be the core life science companies or the supply chain, and say, we're going to be there. We'd like to be able to meet with you. Well, you can come by our booth and meet us there. Or if they're exhibiting as well, we'll go to their booth. So we do that on a consistent basis. It's not the only show, obviously. There are a number of sectors that you see that are important to us. So we've attended the National Plastic Show, two filtration shows, which is tied to the life science sector, but it's a supply chain. But it also moves into the motor vehicle assembly and parts manufacturing cluster, too. Think of automotive filters or truck diesel filters, air filters. Those are all part of the filtration industry. So we've been to two of those, a food processing show, medical device show. Then we've done missions to LA, Chicago, Cleveland, basically where we've identified clients and we want to sit down and get face-to-face with them. So we, we undertake those activities. We've generated, we think, about 17 bona fide leads for Pitt County. Out of those activities, 13 of which are manufacturing projects and three or four of which will visit Pitt County before the end of this fiscal year. Took us a while, basically filling that pipeline, but now we're beginning to see the results of that activity and we're getting client visits. And I think that's very important for all of us. The other elements that I wanted to bring attention to that we've undertaken certain activities, which I think have a benefit to Greenville and Pitt County, one is we've joined forces to get on and promote the notion of an interstate between Raleigh and Norfolk. If you look in terms of the map of eastern North Carolina, if you look at the map of North Carolina, most of the maps you see that are of larger scale show the, only the interstate system. And if you look at only the interstate system, there's a big gaping hole in northeastern North Carolina. But that's one visual. That's marketing. But the other thing is actually improving accessibility to what is the only, my mind, they say there are two, Baltimore and Norfolk, the only two, what they term Panamax ready ports on the east coast. That means the Panama Canal opens and it can make the large ships come through. The Norfolk is one of only two ports that actually could accommodate those mega ships coming through. Really important for us to be able to make that connection. Important also for some of your local companies to have very good accessibility. But we also think it opens up a lot of economic development along that corridor. I'm sure Juan has probably talked to you before about sometimes the frustration is that many parts of Pitt County are not located 20 to 30 miles from an interstate highway. And that's often one of the criteria that's established by a consultant or a company when they're looking for a new plant site. An interstate there would pay basically, but a much larger section of Pitt County within striking distance of an interstate. And we think that's important. But it also in terms of improve the odds for economic development on the northern flank of Greenville and Pitt County. If you think about us right now, we're a little bit lopsided. You're the centerpiece of eastern North Carolina, but you've got a very weak northern half. And so it's important for us to stimulate economic activity on the northern side of Greenville as well. Another example, in partnership with a group called WST Industries, we worked really with Bridgestone Tire Company over in Wilson. And we did an event there to bring attention to sustainability and manufacturing practices. We invited, obviously, a lot of small to medium-sized manufacturing companies from around eastern North Carolina. I think we had about 200 attendees. It's a well-attended event. But we also wrote an article about that. And that article reached 288 media outlets, 288 media outlets across the country posted that article and wrote about eastern North Carolina. So what's the value for Greenville and Pitt County? Well, you were mentioned in that article in a couple of different ways. One is NACL Materials Handling Group was a participant. So it was reported on that plant manager's engagement, involvement, and also the fact that their facility was located in Greenville and Pitt County. I don't know what it would cost for us to actually buy ads in 288 media outlets, but I can tell you, we couldn't afford to pay for it. It would just be way over our ability. But we can do that effectively through doing media placements. And the part of the value we've learned, it costs us about $10,000 years, $10,000 a year to buy into that, but we can sort it. So if we have an article that we want to target specifically the motor vehicle parts, assembly and parts manufacturing cluster, and we know that that's tied to certain geographic areas like Detroit, Chicago, Cleveland, we can actually pre-select, which gives us a much better odd that that media outlet's going to pick up that story because it's been targeted to their desk. And so that's the way that we approach in terms of how, another part of how we complement the efforts of the Pitt County Development Commission in our marketing efforts to get the word out about eastern North Carolina. Of course, the other part is, we're not writing negative stories about eastern North Carolina. We're talking about the good things that take place here and talking about the diversity that exists here, not just that it's a coastal plain area that you ride through and agricultural heartland to be able to get to the beach. There's a lot of other activity that takes place, and that's part of our mission as well. Another element, we secured roughly a half a million dollar federal grant to be able to work in terms of the, specifically the automotive and aerospace sectors. Pitt County is one of six targeted counties to actually utilize that grant to service your SMEs that are interested in, that already are in, or that interested in moving into the supply chain of the automotive and aerospace industries. We'll work in concert with the Industrial Extension Service of NC State and the SBTDC, Small Business and Technology Development Centers across the state, but certainly the office right here at ECU to be able to deliver services to those companies. One is to make sure their financial house is in order, but also get them to think about what's the most efficient way to do business? How do they organize their manufacturing floor to become more efficient, more productive? And then marketing, from a marketing standpoint, how can we, in tandem with others, particularly our local economic developers, move to get them in front of particular companies? Only got two more things I'm going to mention, and I'll be happy to respond to questions if, if you have any for me today. We just conducted a thing called Embark East, the second time we've done a consultants event, where instead of us going out to the consultants, we think it's important for them to be brought to the region. So we brought five consultants and the host community, if you will, was Greenville, Pitt County. But we, so we hosted them here, had an opportunity to be able to show off what is here and the regional assets that exist in this community. But we also took them out beyond so that they got to go to Jacksonville or Little Washington or to Tarboro. We had retail consultants, but primarily there were consultants that worked office projects, manufacturing projects, distribution projects. We did that at a cost of about, a hard cost of about $20,000. If you added our staff, that probably would have added another $10,000 to be able to do that, to look in terms of organizing it, recruiting the consultants to come in, getting the show up, recruiting individuals to go and give testimonials. Because it's one thing for us to stand up in front of a consultant or an industry leader and say, these are the great things about our region. It's, has a much greater impact if we can get an employer from our region to stand up and talk about why they located here or how they arose and all the support they got as an entrepreneur to be able to build their business in eastern North Carolina. So we had about five or six companies come in, some for dinner the night before, some in the morning, to be able to talk about their experience of being in the east. I guess the last thing I'll mention is that, should have put this earlier, but it was tied to our state of the region meeting that we just had, which we had about 350 people attend, held it here at the Greenville-Hilton. People came from all over the state, mostly from around this region, both business and governmental leaders. We announced something pretty significant there, and that was the Duke Foundation presented a half a million dollar check to our organization to be able to expand our STEM East network more broadly throughout eastern North Carolina. I think it's important to note, they did that because they determined that the model that we had developed, both in terms of the system that we were deploying and the methodology by which we were deploying these in terms of bridging the gap between employers and educators in public schools in eastern North Carolina, was a really good model. Number two is that we were, we had established fiduciary responsibility because we've managed several grants. A number of them have been with Golden Leaf Foundation. And that it was a regional approach. And part of it is, they wanted to make that grant on a regional basis rather than a onesie-twosie kind of deal. And so we were very honored that they did that. Partion of that money will come to the benefit of Pitt County. In this case, the lion's share will go to actually extending that STEM model and network into new counties in eastern North Carolina. I mentioned that in terms of part of the reason why regional in that case is important. If you think of the standpoint of an employer, let's say Patheon, for example, Patheon employs 1,000 people. Those people don't all come from Pitt County. They come from a radius of at least 10 counties around this community. And so it's really important to deal with issues that confront more than just a county. And I think that's part of what our role is, is getting buy-in and identifying, if you want to call them best practices or good models that we can bring to eastern North Carolina and then work in partnership with our local communities to disseminate that and have it work. Of course, we can't do that without the partnership of our local communities. And so it's really important that we have participation from counties like Pitt, that we have participation from organizations like East Carolina University, Invited Health, and a number of other private organizations that are investing in the alliance to be able to help us keep moving forward. I really greatly appreciate your time. Thank you, Scott, for adjusting and, and Madam Chairman, for the day, adjusting your schedule to allow me to be here today. I'm going to be actually in England the week of the 15th. I think that's where I'm going to be. No, that's the week before. I'm going to be at BIO, actually, in Philadelphia the week of the 15th. Next week, I actually, I'll be in England. We've got a full agenda in terms of traveling the country and meeting with about 18 different companies or organizations over the course of the week. So I'm sorry I couldn't be able to make it on the 15th, but I delighted to be able to have this opportunity. I'll be more than happy to respond to any questions you might have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chaffee. And we know that you're going to be meeting with our Development Commission this afternoon, correct? And they'll be coming back on the 15th? Is that correct?
Correct.
To make a recommendation or to give a report to us at that time? So if anyone has a question or a comment they would like to make, let's just start down this way and move around. Do you have anything you'd like to say, Mr. Farley? Go, Mr. Garris.
Hi.
Hey, Jimmy.
Thank you for coming and being with us today.
My pleasure.
I'm not going to be able to be at the meeting this evening at the Development Commission. I've served on that board, but I'm not going to be able to be there. So I was thinking, you know, I'm a dollar and cents person, okay? So of your, your operating budget, not the grants you get for specific programs, but your operating budget, how much of that, what percentage of that is funded by the counties and how much of it is funded by the private sector? And the reason I'm asking the question, John, is because I know when we originally started this journey, you had a goal to get certain amount, a certain percentage of your budget from the private sector. And I'm just wondering how that's going.
It's going as well, but it's a, it's a long slog. So we're not to the point where we want to be yet, but we are continuing out on that road in terms of seeking private investors. So we keep adding them. I wouldn't say on a weekly basis, but certainly on a monthly basis, we continue to add that. So our private sector investment in terms of so far this fiscal year is about $178,000. And we expect actually for more funds to come in during this fiscal year. That comes in comparison, if you think, I think our goal is to really reach, Mr. Garris, to where we have about $400,000 a year would be a nice target for us, be very comfortable. That would mean we wouldn't be depend, as dependent on our grants. We've been fortunate in terms of our grant funding. This fiscal year, not including in terms of the Duke money, which is going to be next fiscal year, and largely in terms of this other half a million from the others. But for this fiscal year, our grant funding totals somewhere around $400, $450,000 to support our activities. And the, the value of that is, is we don't go out and get a grant just for a grant sake. We look at those grants, being able to come in and support our programmatic activities. But we get about, it's actually grown a little bit because now that we've taken it into northeastern counties, they've, they've come in and contributed to it as well. So at this point in time, it's probably all totaled, it's probably around a half a million dollars that's coming in in terms of our public funds, if I'm not mistaken. I'll have to go back and check on that and I'll get a more accurate number when I talk to Sylvia about that.
So then between your, your, the private sector and the grants, that's more than, greater than 50%
Yes, sir.
Of your operating costs?
It is. It is.
That's good.
Trying to lever, trying to take your money, and those others, and leverage that as best we can. So it's, and it's important for us in that respect. So if we go to the private sector and we say, well, you know, our counties have bought in, and this is the level of funding we're getting from our counties, that rings well in terms of the private sector, because they see it truly as a public-private joint venture in terms of who we are and what we do.
We are very supportive of the leveraging.
Thank you. We'll keep, we'll keep after that. We're working on another, actually, we're working on another grant with ECU to do something that I think is really kind of neat and novel, be beneficial to our rural community, communities, and probably divide into ECU, Brody. But then we're in another one that's geared to the life science sector. So we're looking in terms of where we can go after grants, leveraging our dollars that still tie us to delivering activity related to our clusters or our sectors.
Thank you.
Mr. McLaughlin?
Thank you. Thank you for the fine presentation, John. You mentioned about developing northern Pitt County, developing strategies to get the northern part of Pitt County up to par. Well, what specific areas are you talking about?
Well, partly, I'm thinking about the whole northern half of this region, of which northern Pitt County is part of it. But if you think about the population, the mass of population in our region, it's clearly the southern part of our region. If you go to the northeast, I think there's only one community that really hits 15,000 people in population, and that's Elizabeth City. Roanoke Rapids, I think, is in that same sphere. And so that's a particular challenge, not only for us. So if you think about the role of Greenville and Pitt County, it certainly plays within Pitt County, but if you're looking in terms of retail sales, and I know there's something going on there to change the formula a little bit, but irregardless of that, if you look at it, if you can build a stronger region around this city and this county, basically, it's the most densely populated area, it's the urban core of this region, and there are certain activities and certain amenities that are going to gravitate to this community because it is that central point, and it does have that urban presence. So as we can grow our population and grow the economy, and improve the economy of northeastern North Carolina, as well as northern Pitt County, that's a benefit to Pitt County in general. So if you look in terms of the I-44 corridor, if you think about it, it just barely skirts north of Bethel. It's about, what is it, about a mile, I think, from Bethel on the north side? And you get an interstate that runs there, and all of a sudden, that puts northern Pitt County, Edgcombe County on the map, where it hasn't been before. And to us, that's a strategic goal. We've gotten buy-in from the state. The more important thing is, is that there's now traction in the state of Virginia. I think it's the first time that I can recall in my 38 years of economic development, is that the state of Virginia and North Carolina have actually agreed at the same time that that highway corridor is important. And I think it's finally that the light bulb went off for them. They thought about their port of Norfolk, doesn't, they don't care whether that company locates in North Carolina or Virginia. If it's traffic that's going through that port, then that's going to be boost to their economy. And so we want to play off of that as much as we can. And there are some key industries in Pitt County that actually depend upon that part for activity. And so with, we're thinking, that's part of the logic in terms of how we grow. But we're willing to work with the Development Commission, any others, in terms of thinking about strategies that actually will serve some of the rural communities. I'll mention one, is that, yeah, we have some projects that are 40 to $100 million projects that we've been called about, and we're the lead point of contact for those. But at the same time, we're focusing a lot of attention on small, recruiting small to medium-sized companies. So these are companies that could locate in a Farmville or an Aiden, possibly a Bethel, you know, or Williamson, because they're not so massive that they don't feel they can move into a small community and be, get the labor that they need to be able to run that operation. And to us, that's important. The other thing is, they aren't driven or motivated by incentives as much as the big projects. There, for them, it's much more about customer service, the right fit, do they fit within the context of the cluster, so to speak? Are there, is the local Economic Development Agency there to be able to help support them if they have an issue and raise their hand? Are they going to get some attention to that? And I think that's something that we can really play up to in eastern North Carolina. That, I hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Mr. Owens?
I'd like to see, John, maybe even get it from Wanda, but you wouldn't have it today, but I'd like to see a list of what the alliance has contributed to each individual county.
Okay.
Okay.
No questions.
Ms. Wilson?
I first became a little more knowledgeable about NC East when I was campaigning, and I paid for my own meal over there at the Hilton. And I did, I was able to get a package at that time, and since that, I've been reading. And I, I think this is, I don't know how many presentations I've heard from you, but what I need are some answers to some personal questions that I may have.
Sure.
Relating to NC East. And I couldn't find an email, which is something that I like communicating with. I couldn't find an email to which I may send questions to, that I could get a response from. And I would appreciate getting that right now, because I want to know how to do that. Those are websites. I want an email that's going to respond to me. Thank you very much, and I appreciate hearing about the northern part of Pitt County, because one of my questions, it wasn't necessarily Pitt County, it was the east, was to what extent are you recruiting blue collar jobs? And I think Mark, Mark asked a good question that would help bring that out. But I'm very interested in blue collar jobs, because if we can find some blue collar jobs, we might can cut some other activity that we might not like. You know what I mean?
Yes, ma'am.
And so, thank you very much for this call. And which one of these you want me to use?
chfe@nceast.org.
Thank you very much.
Is my, my direct email address.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Williams. Commissioner Hammond?
Thank you, Madam Chairman. John, it's good to see you, and thank you for coming by today. When you come by, you always bring the brightest and some of the best information that this board ever received. Thank you for all that you do and all that you have done in the service of your organization to help Pitt County down through the years.
Thank you, sir.
I have one statement I wanted to make, a pilot for airline out of Baltimore. They have a commercial Boeing, they have the largest fleet of Boeing 737, and he said, instead of them praising that and advertising, he said they have the largest fleet of junk. He said, David Hammond, every 737 that's flying today was put in service before 1958. And I said, they gotta be good planes if they, they're flying now, right on, and they have a large fleet of them. And I want all of you to know, if you fly on the airline out of any port on Eastern Shore, if you're flying from Baltimore, Washington, National, or Raleigh-Durham, or Charlotte, what you call, you're basically flying a 737. And they call that the big one, and still are the prop jets, that's some of the private airlines you.
Thank you.
And when I see this North Carolina East Alliance, I'm very, I'm very thankful for your presentation. The mayor of Greenville, when Governor McCrory was here talking about the expansion and how to make this area ready for all that he has got hopes for, it came to me that I had just a few days earlier left Raleigh-Durham Airport and was coming back down 264 to Greenville, when I looked over to and saw a sign that said Goldborough Interstate, and I've been running down that little 117 highway, and that road was VIA right straight into, almost into Simo Johnson's airfield. And he was saying that was part of the connection that he was praising the area for, the mayor of, the current mayor of Greenville.
Interstate 7095. Take advantage of that one statement to point out to you. You mentioned about the old fleet, 737s. That's one of the big things that's driving the aerospace industry today. Both Airbus and Boeing, which are the two largest producers of aircraft, are, both have orders on hand for about 8,000 aircraft. They have a backlog that spans for years, in terms of them being able to clear out that backlog. Part of that is because the airlines have postponed buying new aircraft, but the other thing is driving it is fuel efficiency. So lighter aircraft made with composites and more efficient engine technology. And so there's going to be an awful lot of aircraft built over the course of the next decade to be able to replace that old fleet. Thank you, Dave.
Thank you very much, John. We appreciate your presentation.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, good to see you again.
Look forward, if you have any other questions, don't hesitate to drop me an email, give me a call either way, I'd be more than happy to respond. Thank you.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have any public addresses to the board?
No, ma'am, unless there's somebody in the audience.
Is anyone here that came in late and didn't get a chance to sign up? Okay, well, we'll move on to our items for report with our manager, Scott Elliott.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a couple items real quick. Your next meeting dates, June 9th at 7 o'clock, would be one week from tomorrow night in this meeting room, is the public hearing on the fiscal year 15, 16 operating budget. Today's newspaper did have stated it would be June 7th at 7 o'clock, but that would be a Sunday, but it is Tuesday, 7:00 PM in this room, one week from tomorrow.
Right, Hugh?
Yes, ma'am. Then, your next regular meeting is June 15th at 6:00 PM, and then in the month of July, there's only one meeting, and that's on July the 20th at 9:00 AM. That is due to two factors, one being the July 4th holiday, and the second being the NECO conference being held in Charlotte Mecklenburg County. So there will only be one, one meeting in the month of July. On the next item, North Carolina Department of Labor Safety Awards. This is something we recognize annually, the different departments within Pitt County government that receive these awards. We've got the Animal Shelter has received a gold award for the fourth year. The Emergency Management has received a gold award for the third year. Detention Center, a gold award for the first year. The Pitt County Government in general has received an award for a ninth consecutive year. The Pitt Area Transit System, second year consecutive silver award. Pitt County Social Services, first year silver award. The Public Health Department received an award too, and they actually picked theirs up at the presentation. The only other thing I had was that, it's come to our attention, that the special presentation for Mitch Smith is actually going to be on June 15th at 6:00 PM, and we'll recognize him there at that meeting.
So we don't need to do anything about the addition to the agenda, we'll just move it to the next meeting?
Correct.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion for items for consent.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to make a comment. I don't disagree with the transfer of the Chicago sewer system to Greenville Utilities Commission. I do object to the $10. The county, through the school system, is still going to have a $2 million debt that's going to have to be retired, and we're going to be funding it. We're going to be adding to Greenville Utilities inventory, and frankly, as I'm not sure what they do good for the county or the county residents, especially if you live in E.T.J. and other areas. And so consequently, the rest of you may vote for it, but I have to vote against it on the principle, because I don't think it's right that we're helping them. They call themselves a non, a tax-exempt organization, not tax-exempt, but a nonprofit organization, and yet they transfer millions of dollars at the city of Greenville, money that originally was intended to reduce the debt on the, for the electropower cities, of which they have not done sufficiently. Had they utilized the extra money over all these years, it would have long since been paid for. So quite frankly, as I think it's a mistake for us to transfer at a loss of $2 million. Thank you.
Mr. Coulson, can I just come in on that real quick? In terms of a bill of sale, the attorney can probably pipe in on this too, but to make the bill of sale a legal transaction, there has to be some nominal amount of money.
Understandably. How about $2 million, then?
Okay, can we vote, please, on the motion? This is to accept the agenda, the items for consent.
Which would approve, which would approve for things that are on there, including the transfer of the money.
You could pull that one off separately if.
Well, we, it would be nice if we pull it off separately, because I really agree with Mr. Coulson. I'm getting complaints from Bethel about $1,300 and $1,100 water bills, and that is ridiculous. Water is a source of life.
Could we ask the attorney if you would speak to where we are in this and how long we have been doing this, negotiating?
The Chicago sewer, for the Chicago sewer project in particular? Yeah, this project started several years ago to serve, to provide sewer lines to the Chicago School, because they needed that additional capacity. We originally started with one contractor, that contractor went bankrupt, and then we made claims under the performance and payment bonds, and another company came in. So this project was long overdue and is now finally completed. Greenville Utilities Commission did contribute, as part of the original agreements, $480,000 toward the cost of this project, in addition to grant funds that we've received from the Rural Center, and then a loan that we've received from the state. I know Phil is in the audience, you can correct me if I've said anything wrong, but it was a multi, several different entities contributed to make this project happen. It is finally complete after all of those bumps in the road, and it was the original intention of this project, because it would be very costly for the county to maintain and operate a sewer system. It had been the original intent of the project for Greenville Utilities to assume the cost of the maintenance and the upkeep of that system going forward. And so.
It's just kind of the finalization of many years of.
Absolutely.
Work and discussion and meeting.
Madam Chairman, I'd like to respond to that.
Yes, sir.
I believe it was around 2010. I was not a commissioner at the time. When I heard about it, read about it, and investigated it, I was, I was disappointed in the action of this board. If I had been on this board, I would have squawked very loudly about this, because I feel like it's a gimme. And that, yes, I recognize that it's needed, but I personally believe that Greenville Utilities has a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of Pitt County to do the right thing, which is to run these lines. Because after all, who is going to benefit from this? They are. They're the ones that are going to be receiving the money and raising the rates and so on because of the line that is run. Why are we subsidizing them $2 million? I don't agree with us having to do that. I mean, we got a similar situation that was out at Stokes. There's elementary school that was in trouble there. And that, we could say that all around the county, but they are, they're the, if you got a pig and a chicken at the trough, I'm sorry, but they're the hog. And they need to step up and do the right thing for the citizens of Pitt County. If you direct water, you direct sewer, and you direct electricity and roads, you can drive growth anyplace you want. It's a planning issue. And why are we giving them $2 million through a state loan that we are going to be paying for? It may be funneled through the school system, but we're the ones funding it. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Thank you very much. We'll move on now to our items for decision. The first thing is our budget amendment. Dwayne Holder for the courthouse. Yes, sir.
I think that's self-explanatory. The budget, I mean, the agenda shows that it's a necessity they had to do, and it's another repair and maintenance situation. I move we approve it.
Okay. Let's vote, please, unless there's any discussion. Mark, you need to vote. Mark?
Mary's been playing a month.
You know I do things.
Not working.
Have a good one.
Okay. Thank you. The next item is a. The next item is a request from the Sheriff's Office for a budget amendment.
Madam Chairman, Board, good morning to everybody. As you can see on your request there, this is a request that we're, we're making from a fund that's called LAP salary. And LAP salary is basically defined as salaries that have not been paid this year due to positions being vacated. So far this year in the sheriff's salary, we've had four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars, LAP salary. Detention Center, we've had four hundred and fifty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. This should be an indicator and a warning sign is, you know, as I mentioned to you earlier, I'm struggling to keep people employed. I'm struggling to hire new recruits. If you, to put a number to that, since I've been sheriff, I've hired a hundred and fifty people. People say there's no turnover. I have three hundred and fifty employees. That's a lot of employees to hire, and our hiring process takes months. You can't just go in and hire somebody off the street. We have to do intensive backgrounds. We go through their homes, we go through their schools, we find six new people that they don't give us for references to background checks on. And what I'm asking out of this, I'm very concerned about this leftover money for an employment board. What I'm trying to do is our employees have had to work so much extra, they've had to work, they can't take their holiday time, their comp time is through the roof, and, and I'm looking, they can't take vacation time. So I'm looking at getting okay from the board to have this pool of money to me, for me to be able to go in and look. Some people need, they have excessive overtime, excessive, excessive comp time. I need to be able to pay some of these employees out. Some of them are close to retirement, they're not going to want to get paid out. So what I want to do is have the authority for me to go in and police this pool of overtime we have and comp time. I have four thousand, four hundred and thirty-five comp time hours in the sheriff's office budget. And in holiday time, I have two thousand, eight hundred and ninety-five hours in holiday pay that's due to our employees. That's just to the sheriff's office side. In detention center side, we have two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-two hours of comp time. In holiday time, we have two thousand, eight hundred and eighty-seven hours. It's something we're responsible for. I just think it would give me an extra burden of having to figure out, I'm already short-staffed, not having to figure out how I'm going to police this time and get it down, get it down, get it down. I'm continuously short-staffed because we have so much comp time. And I'm very concerned about that figure. We have four hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in salaries that haven't been filled this year. Like I said, it's tough employment hiring people. So I'm asking the, the board, if they would, to give me the authority to go in and work on getting these figures down. There's several options we can use. It depends on what's the pleasure of the board. If you give me the full amount, I could go in and start paying some of these high amounts down. Some of them, we could go back to the sixty-hour rule and get them down to the minimum, what the county policy requires them to have sixty hours of comp, of holiday time, comp time. And I guess it's just whatever the board's pleasure is. I mean, if you're going to give me, if you will give me the authority to take this money and use some of it, not saying all of it would be used, but some of it would be used. The maximum figures on both items would be one hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars on the sheriff's side, and the max on the county, detention center will be one hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. And it's still going to leave a balance of, what's the balance after that? Is it in? If we paid it all out on the sheriff's side, it'd be still a hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars left and, and send back the fund balance.
Is that it? Okay, I'm going to ask the manager if he'll speak to this. He's given us some information, and some of us have been asking some questions over the past few days, and he's going to speak to this now.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. What I passed out was the list of individuals who would receive either the banked comp time or banked holiday balances based upon this three hundred and forty-six thousand dollar request. A couple of things on the request, one being that until we reach June thirtieth and we know what our spending is for the entire organization, as you're aware, we have a two million dollar fund balance plug that we do each year, that we need to make sure that that's captured back. And the way that that cap, that, that plug is basically, we anticipate that ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent of our budget will be spent, two or three percent will not be spent, and those portions that are not spent are, i.e., as Sheriff mentioned, LAP salary, we expect that to fall back to fund balance to ensure that we're not spending fund balance. Yes, we did present in the budget workshops and the preliminary budget that we do expect our fund, our fund balances is healthy, and we do expect to, to have more than twenty percent by the time June thirtieth comes. Another point about all of these, these balances, when these employees leave, there, by law, we are required to, to pay these balances. And I will admit, the sheriff is, I guess it's good to, the intent is good to try to pay them off because as time goes, as we give a cost of living or we do a merit increase, all it does to these balances is make them grow. So some of these, these times could have earned two or three years back a lower salary, and as time goes, as we carry the balances, yes, they do grow, but there's still a concern. And wanted to pass out and remind you, if you take one of these, pass it down. In the budget workshops, we talked about a list of over one point two million, you could really say probably about one point four, one point five million dollars of one-time expenses that need to be considered after we receive the audit, everything from the communications CAD software, we had vehicles for the sheriff's office, we had the voting equipment for elections. Within detention center, we had a camera system, we had vans. Within the courthouse, we had interior improvements, interior, exterior improvements, and the list goes on. So in my mind, it would be too premature just to allocate three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars of LAP salary that we count towards going to fund balance prior to, A, knowing what that fund balance will be, and then B, measuring it against the list of other items that are already been presented to you and paying salaries that's not on there. Then the last point would be, the sheriff's office is, is not the only department that has banked balances of either holiday pay or comp time. All the other departments have this as well. Now, in particular, the holiday hours are, are more just to than the nine-one-one communication center, but all our departments have balances of comp time.
Okay, thank you for that. I think it helps. One question, this last sheet that we got, that these one-time expenses are things we're going to visit after the budget is approved, when we know how much we have in the fund balance and that sort of thing. And there are a lot of things on here that we certainly, that we've got to speak to. I know that. So just to help us with a little information before we have any discussion, anybody want to speak? Yes, Mr. Owens and Mr. Garrison.
Well, I was just going to say, I agree with the point that Scott had made there about other employees. Now, I, you know, want to do what is right, but I don't like the idea of segregating one group and giving them a benefit that we're not going to offer to everyone. So if the board decides to wait until after we see what our fund balance is going to be, to make this decision, which I think is appropriate, then I would like to see what that figure would be for all county employees. Again, we need to treat everyone fairly and equitably.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Owens?
Scott, the holiday term here, holiday time, that's not vacation, though, is it? That, is, is that a certain day that is earned by a certain length of service in addition to vacation?
All, all employees are given twelve holiday hours, twelve holidays per year at eight hours per, per day. Now, two years ago, you as a board did implement a policy saying that employee could not carry any more than sixty hours of holiday pay, and once they did, then they were required to take that off. Matter of fact, we require the employees to, to work down holiday leaves first, comp time second, and then personal leave, which is vacation, third. So technically, no employee should be above a sixty-hour balance, but we do have balances that are, that were beyond that before we started. We have some employees who have continued to accrue those leave balances even after the policy was put into effect.
When, when did we implement that about working it down to sixty?
Two, well, two years ago on the holiday.
How did we arrive at then here? Am I misreading this with seven thousand hours and eight thousand hours?
Well, those are.
Or am I misreading?
Those are dollars. Those are, those are dollars. The hours are on the, the first column where it says holiday time.
Time is in the first column.
So you say we got a plan that says get it down to sixty? Is that what you're saying?
Well, what you implemented was a policy saying that employees couldn't bank any more than sixty hours. Now, most employees are complying with, with that policy. There's a few others that continue that are exempt under that portion of the personal ordinance and continue to bank holiday hours.
My honor, the rate leads to the sheriff, but explain to me what comp time entails.
Comp time is when you work over the normally number of hours a week, let's say in the case of a normal week, forty hours, and you're then, since we can't, we don't have funds necessarily to pay the employee, we then allow them to bank those normally at time and a half. So if you worked an hour, you, you have an hour and a half banked. Now, the thing about comp time hours for non-exempt employees, we have to pay them those monies if they were to leave the county service, just like we'd have to pay banked holiday hours as well, as well as banked leave time, up to two hundred and forty hours.
Well, normally when you, if, if someone doesn't come in and request, I'd like to Sheriff, is about payment of this, when do you pay this? Is the employment contract mention anything about comp time or holiday time?
Well, the way I understand Fair Labor Standards Act, we have to pay, when they leave the county service, whether they retire, whether they quit for another job, when they leave our, our service, we then are required to pay the balances off. Again, personal leave up to two forty, comp time, whatever they have, and then the holiday time.
So this request by the sheriff is just advancing what you normally have been doing with that, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
One more question, Madam.
Yes, sir.
When would you say that the employee became vested owns the time earned by comp time and the time earned by holiday time?
Day one they earn it. I mean, the, I mean, no, under our personnel system, you're really, after six months, you're, you're probationary employee up to six months, but you can still earn holiday time, comp time, and personal leave within that six months. Even if you left within six months, we would still be obligated legally to pay the, the employer for those hours.
Well, is, is the theory of having comp time an estimate to maintain employees? Is there an incentive there or something?
It's to maintain the service to the citizens if, you know, the sheriff needs deputies to complete reports, or if he, if we have an incident such as the, the shooting killing in Farmville where he has to have them investigate, and he can probably speak to this better than I can.
Basically, when they don't finish their, their, their work assignment during their twelve hours, they have to stay over. So either we, we either pay them overtime or we give them comp time. And comp time is just basically the time on the books that they're entitled to come back and get. And my whole reason for this is, we're so short-staffed, I can't give them their time off. That's why it keeps accumulating and accumulating. If I was to go in and tell everybody to get their time down, we had to lock the doors.
At the same time, in all fairness, there are quite a few vacancies, both on the sheriff's deputy side and on the detention side. So, I mean, the ability to hire positions and not have to pay as much comp time and holiday pay is there, but it's just due to the high number of vacancies to do.
And our amount of overtime in both departments has doubled from two thousand, twelve, thirteen. We paid a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in overtime.
Would you pull the mic over, please?
We paid a hundred and twelve thousand dollars in two thousand, thirteen in overtime. This year, we're, we're, if we figure out the rest of the year, it's going to be pretty close to two hundred thousand in overtime.
I think if you look at your vacancy rate, though, you'll see your vacancy rate is much higher in this past year than it has been prior to.
Sometimes I have to hire four people just to work at detention center to make the shift so it can operate. These people are off duty. I have to make them come in and work because we're so short-staffed.
Mr. Owens had another question before he finishes.
Who determines when an employee is to be paid for the comp time? Sheriff, do you determine that?
Yeah, through our, the supervisors do, through the directions we give them.
All right. And Scott, you're saying, once they earn that, that's theirs, is that correct?
Correct. And the sheriff does have, he does budget overtime hours within his budget. Most departments do not. So he's, as I understand it, you've got an allocation for each employee to work so much overtime that they're, they've already been compensated for. This is, is above and beyond what you've already compensated them in overtime.
And, and holiday time is the same thing?
It's, there's, there's no budget for holiday, holiday time.
Holiday is when they're working, and the holiday is Christmas day, and I'm having to work today, then you bank that holiday time.
Well, when do they expect, when do they expect to be paid, Sheriff?
They have to take their holiday off instead of vacation.
How many employees do you have at Sheriff's Department?
About three hundred and fifty.
How many have at the detention center?
About a hundred and fifty-six.
And you don't have time to let someone have a day off with that many people working?
We're four short in, in detention center on first shift.
Do you have any vacancies you hadn't filled?
Sir?
Do you have any?
Yeah, yeah.
vacant positions you haven't filled?
Every time, I hired eight in the last three months, and I've had probably six quit.
You have six that haven't been paid.
That's what I was saying from beginning, is I can't just hire them today, I have to do background checks, it's very intense. It takes three months to hire somebody and data turn in the application.
Well, I think an employee ought to be paid when they earn the money.
I agree.
That's what I said while ago. And I think it's a management pro, a problem, Sheriff, if you haven't paid them before now, if it's in your prerogative to do it.
The money hasn't been there to pay them.
And, but also.
It makes life a lot simpler, we pay them, you're right.
I also think that Mr. Garrison's suggestion about if Scott is the county manager, needs to bring some other information back to us to substantiate a decision from us, I've already told you my opinion, but I think that's a management problem. I think they ought to have been paid when they earned it, and if we haven't been doing that, we haven't been doing right. But I want Scott to come back with his recommendation on it. Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
Thank you, Sheriff, for the presentation. Recently, I had a question. Y'all need to get some oil for these chairs.
I'm going to change for my chair.
Recently, I had a, a question that comes before me relating to the Sheriff's Department, and it was a very simple question. So I called and I said, well, I don't know anybody, it's best thing to ask the High Sheriff. And so I made a phone call to your, the non-emergency line, and I asked for you, I had to find out what was in my, but anyway, to make a long story short, by the time, and I never got, I never reached a phone that said, this is the sheriff, and I'll return your call or whatever. But by the time I reached and asked the question whether it was emergency or personal, I didn't know what to say because my question was not an emergency. I knew that. But was it personal? I don't know. And I said, well, this is Commissioner Mary Perkins-Williams. And the manner, and then I'm with Mark about the management thing, the manner in which your staff handled me made me so curious as to what's going on and whatever is doing, said what, he told me to lower my voice, made me so curious about what's going on.
I didn't tell you that. It made you mad.
Oh, well, the manner in which I was referred made me curious about what is happening. And so, and thank you, Dave, so much. And so, because I'm not arguing with you, Sheriff, but it, it sent a message to me as a person who was just inquiring to ask you a non-emergency but an essential question. And I didn't know whether it was personal, and I don't know what a personal call is when I say every time that this is Commissioner Mary Perkins-Williams. And so as I called the county manager about that, he said, did you say that you were Commissioner Mary Perkins-Williams? And I said, yes. But when I first got referred, it went to someone else. It did not go to your message line or your phone. And that's what Neil Elks name is, and that's who I called back. And I asked again and made sure, I said, this is Commissioner Mary Perkins-Williams because that's what we're supposed to do when we call the partner here. Now, I realize you're the High Sheriff and you're in charge, but something is wrong when I never did get to you. And if I was Joe Blow Public, if I was Joe Blow Public, and I had this problem as a Commissioner, I can't imagine what Joe Blow Public would ask when they want to know just simply how to get some information from the Sheriff's Department. It's maybe personal to them, but it's not of a personal nature for what I might think is personal, but it is a question. You understand what I'm saying in the long term? I know, I know I'm on my soapbox, Charles, but what I'm trying to.
I got an explanation for you. Called last week, and that's why the sheriff don't like to take vacation, he took next week off. And I actually got a page from, from my assistant to call you. And I actually got a page from my assistant to call you, and I said, will you please call her back and tell her I'm on vacation? She said, it's not an emergency, she just wants you to call her back. And I said, please call her back and tell her, and she wants me to stop what I'm doing right now and call her back, and I never heard back, so I figured...
That was, that was never a return call.
I don't have, I have a voicemail, but none of my voicemails should ever be, reach a voicemail. I require a live operator answer all my calls.
Oh, okay, well, that's a good explanation, but I tell you about it...
That's why I hate to take vacation, my family gets on me every week, every year.
You are entitled to vacation.
I did know you called last week, which I got a call.
And everyone needs to rest, however, the manner in which I referred was running around was not a...
I think you told my administrative assistant, Stephanie Owens, and that's who, she should have screened my calls. Literally, I get hundreds of calls a day for everybody who wants to talk to the sheriff, and they think that they got to talk to the sheriff about a subpoena, and most time, her job is to screen those calls, and people that I really need to get contact with, they get, she takes the message and makes sure I get some.
Well, that particular call could have gone to any one of your administrative staff people in position about the Sheriff's Department.
Apparently, you got a time that maybe other lines were synced with another call or something, I don't know, I apologize.
Mr. Els, could you make an opportunity for her to talk to you about this issue at another time?
Well, by the time I went around about six times now, I forgot the question.
I'm asking him yet, you do this time. Anything else, Ms. Williams?
Well, it was too much for me to get the answer to now, and it wasn't that essential that, I've forgotten it now. I was going to answer the person's question, but I got so curious about the runaround that now I've forgotten the question, and the general public shouldn't get that, Mr. Sheriff Els.
Okay, Mr. McGlonghorn?
Thank you, Madam Sheriff. I'll ask Scott this question. Are there any other departments throughout the county that's having a similar problem that the sheriffs are having?
Not to the extent you're saying here. The only, I mean, within DSS, as they were implementing the NC FAST conversion, computer software conversion, they did have some specific weeks and weekends in which they worked their employees. It was a planned expenditure of overtime, and they had federal and state dollars that could pull down seventy-five to sixty-six percent. So we did pay some overtime in that case, but again, there was monies available that didn't hit the general fund as... Because every dollar that you spend for the sheriffs for these balances is a dollar out of the general fund compared to within DSS on their NC FAST conversion, when we paid overtime, it was, you know, reimbursed up to the highest seventy-five percent.
Well, you know, in line of what the sheriff is saying, in that his employees certainly are in a critical position, and if they would take time, he can't afford to give them time off something because of the critical nature of what they're doing. I think that we have to consider, you know, the circumstances that's involved in actually managing and planning. And it sounds like to me that the sheriff is trying to manage as good as possible, but because of the critical nature of the employees, it's difficult for him to do that. I certainly, you know, like to try to treat everybody, you know, right, but you have to also look at the nature of what's going on. And so I'm waiting to hear your recommendation based upon some of those views that I'm just making.
Okay, Mr. Hammond?
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much, Madam Sheriff. The other day, I asked our county manager, what would it take in ad valorem taxes to, taxes to meet those financial areas that you was asking for when you presented your budget plan to us? And he told me a penny sales tax would give us, how much you said, Scott?
Well, it wasn't sales tax, you asked what it...
Not, not sales tax, penny.
Property tax, you asked what the equivalent of a million dollars of county funds it would be, and that'd be just under a penny.
Be one penny.
His total budget request was three point four million that came before you.
Well, when we was having that budget presentation, Commissioner Coulson made a statement, and one of my friends asked me, was I going to join him when he was saying that he would, he would vote for a tax increase to have a, what kind of squad was that, Tom?
Well, you're thinking of the four gang members, but I was actually looking at from the standpoint of having some kind of an effort to where the Sheriff's Department was brought up in a short number of years to the equivalent of at least what the city is paying their police officers. And that's where I think the million dollars came in. The four officers wouldn't have been a million dollars.
Is that, excuse me?
Well, the, the city used to be the hiring ground for the sheriff when I came on the board, when they, a lot of officers was leaving, not only the city of Greenville, but they were leaving county seats in eastern North Carolina to come to work for Pitt County Sheriff's Department. And, and I haven't heard much of that lately since I've been on board, and I want to say to the sheriff, I know as Commissioner Owens was telling you while ago, when a person earns comp time, they want to be paid. And they should, they should be paid when it's earned, when it's owed, they should be paid. And if you got to have personnel to be able to fill these slots, we need to talk about it.
Good, thank you very much. Next, I have Mr. Coulson.
Okay, let me ask...
Can I just take one thing before we start, if you don't mind? I asked the attorney a question about some, our rules for procedure, which I vaguely remember in the times we were educated on our process. And when we're holding discussions, and help me if I don't say this correctly, it's important that we as commissioners speak to what is on the agenda at that time, and if we need to ask for additional information later from someone, we need to. So I would like to ask anyone, anytime, not just on this issue, but to try to focus their questions and comments directly related to what we're discussing at that time that's on the present agenda. Thank you. Okay, Mr. Coulson?
First off, when you say somebody works on Christmas and you're paying them comp time, if they work a twelve-hour shift, do they get paid in their check for that twelve hours? Or do they get the twelve hours times one and a half or eighteen hours comp time?
At the present, they get paid as if they were on duty, and they bank a holiday time.
Eight hours.
Eight hours of holiday.
Even though they work twelve.
They'll get paid for twelve hours, as they normally would, and then you will receive an additional eight hours of comp.
Well, I know I'm going to sound like a broken record, but I come from the private sector.
Yes, sir.
And if it takes us sixty hours, then we got a salary job, you don't get paid more.
That's right.
Why is it government does that? Why is the government give away time and a half? We're saying we don't have enough money to pay these people or to pay for or to do the comp time, but we have time and a half money later on. Is there something wrong with this? If somebody can figure that one out, you know, that I think we'd be in a good shape. I understand that you're short of monies and so on, but I'm going to digress, Beth, because I think it's important. I tried to call your office last week as well, and I tried, and I asked for you. I was not told you were on vacation. I got somebody who transferred me to Stephanie, I got her voicemail, I left the voicemail, and she promised to call me back. I didn't get called back, and it had to do with the budget matter. So, and I had explained that, and I thought, well, maybe that might be of some interest. I had Scott in Florida just take a look at a request I had as to what would it take in order for us to get the disparage between the Sheriff's Department and the city brought up the snuff. And the number came out that I believe is five hundred and sixty-three thousand dollars, I'm going by memory here. There would be about another three hundred thousand dollars if you were to put it towards other people that if you just raise up some, now all of a sudden, others are at the same level and they probably should have been hired. So we're talking about eight hundred thousand dollars. We just gave away two million dollars to the Greenville Utilities Corporation. We can afford to give away two million dollars to essentially a private organization as far as what it is with us. We can't find the amount of money that we need as commissioners to bring up the salary to where he does not have the problems hiring like he's having now. And, you know, the one cent, I've already heard from some people that have called me Democrats, called me a Democrat because I'm for a tax increase. No, I don't like taxes any more than anybody else, but you know, there is a time where it's a question of leadership. It's a question of this board taking a stance and saying, you know, it's the right thing to do. I was on this board from two thousand to two thousand and eight, and we had this problem. And when I got reelected in two thousand and twelve, we still have this problem. Now, here it is, fifteen years later, is it not time for us to do something? And so, yes, David, if it comes down to raising the taxes a penny to be able to give the Sheriff's Department what it needs in order to get and hold good people, it's just like with the four individuals that he needs for the gangs. You know, I've actually been threatened because of that. I have been told I need to keep my mouth shut because I'm talking out about the gangs. That ought to be a message, it certainly was a message to me when I heard it, and I have a concealed carry. No, I don't have it on me now, because I know I'm not allowed to bring it in here. But, you know, we can't just take a new hire and put them into the gang, the group that he wants to be able to start working to try to curb this gang, and I'm not talking about midnight basketball. That doesn't do a dang thing.
Agreed.
So, anyway, getting back to the holiday pay and stuff, it surprises me, like I said, that we don't have the money now, but we can pay time and a half in the form of compensation. And I don't really like the fact that we have county employees that are salary that can somehow tap into this too. I don't get it. You know, the, just, just a matter of principle for whatever it's worth. Every hour that I spend in a board meeting or when we have something here as far as budget talks and stuff like that that takes away from my work, I either stay late, go in early, or...
Or lose.
Or, well, I don't, don't lose, or I use vacation. I burn my time because I demanded of my employees, and by God, I don't feel like I'm better than they are. But anyway, getting back to it, I do believe we have got to find the money to be able to increase the budget because as it now stands, the last I heard, and I don't know that there have been some changes in it because that hasn't been communicated to me yet, but I will not vote for this coming budget based on what I have seen. Thank you, Madam Sheriff.
Okay, Mr. Manager, and then we'll go back to you, Ms. Williams.
I just want to clarify the comment about salaried or what we might call exempt versus non-exempt employees. Non-exempt, well, your exempt employees are normally your department heads as such and key supervisors. They do not accrue comp time. For the most part, they do not or should not be, other than the sheriff, they are not banking holiday hours.
Well, how can, how can that be, I mean...
Because they're, under Fair Labor Standards Acts, like you said, they work the number of hours to get the job done. So if it's forty, forty-five, fifty...
Well, and no offense to the sheriff, but then why is the sheriff able to do that?
Because there are certain sections of the Pitt County Personnel Ordinance that he is not subject to, and he can make his own rules.
Okay, Ms. Williams?
I was going to say, having worked at the university for a number of years, there were two kinds of personnel acts, one with EPA and SPA. And the people who would classify EPA, from what I was told, did not get the opportunity to bank and increase. Only the SPA people were allowed to do that. But having been SPA, I never got paid overtime or more than for hours that I worked prior to in the times that I did, that I did do that, even though I was professional SPA. But, so, it's the, it's the, it's the rule of the management as to how it's made and how it's done and how it's distributed and how it's handled, from what I understand from the university. And that differed.
Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm just trying to get a little direction about where we're heading right now. Yes, Mr. Owens?
Madam Sheriff, I think that the manager's made a good proposal about this, and I concur that he needs time to be in a position to advise this problem.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else, and that, we're just going to put this there for the, what was it that's in there, the statement that you have? I think I'll read that, is this what you're referencing, Mr. Owens? Concerning this budget amendment and the amount of three hundred and forty-six thousand eight hundred and seventy-five dollars, the following is noted. It goes on to tell us about the ninety-two employees. The recommendation is the consideration of this, what effect will this have on the fund balance? All of these answers to these questions, I think we need to have before we can make a definitive decision. And is that what we're seeing, Mr. Owens?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, is that in the form of a motion?
It is.
Okay.
And I will second that, but I also want to include, when the manager comes back to us with, I wanted to include all county employees.
That's part of it, Jim.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Amen.
Before we vote, I would like to just let the citizens know, and I know all the commissioners know, in our Friday report, we get, and it was requested a good while ago by Commissioner James, that we got a report as to the number of people who leave employment in the county, in all the departments, regardless of whether it's a termination, if it's a transfer, they're going to a different job out of town or to another position. And it was, it was brought about because of the reference to losing many people, particularly in the Sheriff's Department, and it had been in other places also. And I've asked that we get that kind of a capitulation of that report because when we read it each month, it never seems to me like we've, I haven't read in, I've, I've never seen seven people from the Sheriff's Department going out in that month. And I look at it every time because it's all departments for whatever reason. And the, and it really worries me, and I know this is going to sound really strange, Sheriff Els, maybe, but I think it's important. I mean, we need somebody out there doing a lot of recruiting. Because this, when you look at these salaries, and some of these people, these jobs do not require major type of training or degrees or that sort of thing. And when you look at this list of these salaries in general, and then you look at educators' salaries and the expectations for them, it, it seems like to me that it's, you know, we ought to be able, my point is, we ought to be able to find some people out there. And I'm, I'm not looking for a response, I'm just making some statements that I think about. And those of us who have been in positions of hiring and recruiting and trying to find people, good people, to fill positions, it's very important. So I just wanted to remind the citizens that we are trying to look at all areas of this. And I think your explanation of the holidays, there are certain jobs, when you take them, you know that your turn's going to come around and you're going to have to work on Christmas. And that was kind of the explanation that you gave about the, you know, this is my turn, not, that I have to work on Christmas, and then I get my eight hours. Tell me...
At a later date.
Yes, at a later date, okay. Thank you very much. Let's vote now on that motion.
We're voting on Mark's motion.
Yes. Uh, Commissioner, okay, I'm, I'm going to take a one-minute squeaky-chair exchange break. And who's supposed to be coming forward, you can come forward at the next... You can come forward at the next-
Sure, we have James Rhodes.
Okay, James.
I got Mr. Rose up here. Can't we just give her that along?
No.
Madam Chair.
Yes, thank you.
This is item number three. I'd like to be at the field with that, since I have had my dealings with, with the issue in this, and as I've done in previously, and I do not want to participate or vote in any manner of this.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am.
If this is appropriate, I'd like to offer a motion that we accept this.
I'll second that.
We've had a motion and a second to this. Are there any comments? Okay. This is a project that we've been working on a very long time, and the citizens of Candlewick have been very diligent about this, and I'm excited and happy for them, as all of the commissioners are, I think. So, let's vote.
And if I may just add, Madam Chairman, there, the contract that's in your materials will have some very minor modifications to it that we have negotiated with the state, changing email addresses. So, if you'll approve that with the authority to make those minor modifications.
Okay, is that approved as far as the motion, Ms. Williams? The inclusion of that, and second, okay?
Madam Chairman, can I ask, are there any key updates that James needs to make regarding the project?
Are there?
A very aggressive schedule on this one, since the contract was delayed in getting here, so we've got about three years to complete this project. So, we've got some milestone deadlines we've got to meet very soon.
Okay, good. And this is a grant, and money that we waited for, for a long time, and we've done a lot of stuff, and they've been some diligent citizens out there.
The only difference between the, the original grant announcement of three million dollars, they're now asking for a match of eighteen thousand five hundred. What we're proposing is, we're, we're gonna develop an interlocal agreement between the county and the Candlewick Sanitary, area sanitary district, that we just include this with the ten thousand that they already owe the county. This is being proposed to be paid back by tap-on fees, I believe, right, James?
Correct, connection fees.
Connection fees, so we would, I guess for now, we will commit to the eighteen five, recoup that from the sanitary district.
And this is but one series of actions we'll be before you to talk about in the upcoming months for this project.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Rhodes. Yes.
Mark wanted to abstain, but it went through his abstain finally. Okay, all right.
Thank you, and next, we have Mr. Rhodes.
The second item here is for the transition of the Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance Administration over to the town of Winterville. You may recall about two years ago, the town of Winterville did assume the responsibility for building code enforcement. It is very important that they also handle the floodplain management at the same time. So, with their concurrence and their request to go ahead and transition this responsibility over, they're looking at a July first transition date. Our interlocal agreement calls for six months' notice. So, since it's a little bit shortened period, we need your action today to go ahead and let this happen by July first.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, let's vote if there are no comments or questions. Mr. Hammond?
I'm mashing it, but it ain't.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Scott relative to the appointments, some of our appointments. And this is an appointment and a reappointment to the Airport Authority.
Yes, Madam Chairman, this is Adam, on number five on the agenda, to PGV Airport. John Banks, who's the current chairman of their point, is up for reappointment. It's being recommended to be reappointed to a three-year term. James O'Brien's term, he is not seeking a reappointment, and they are requesting or recommending the appointment of Aileen Wilson to replace John O'Brien.
Mr. Manager, I move that we approve Banks and Wilson to the Airport Authority.
Second.
Okay, let's vote, please. Okay, and next, Mr. Manager?
Next, item six on the agenda, reappointments to the Pitt County Nursing Home slash Adult Care Community Advisory Committee. The committee's commission is recommending that Catherine McCab and Brenda Alexander be reappointed to this committee.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, any other nominations? Let's vote, please. Okay, and next is nomination to the Greenville Utilities-
Yes, ma'am, on this one, to the Greenville Utilities Commission, you as the county commissioners making nomination to the Greenville City Council for the, what they call the non-municipal member who has served by GUC service. Virginia Hardy's term on the board has, has ran its course, and she's not eligible for a reappointment. It's being recommended that Parker Overton be nominated to the Greenville City Council replacement of Hardy.
Mr. Manager, that was recommended by John Minjes, wasn't it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I move that we approve that.
Second.
Let's vote, please. And then we, David, we need a vote, like.
Just one moment.
Okay, and our last reappointment is to the EMS Systems Plan Oversight Committee.
Yes, ma'am, you have two different sorts of appointments on this EMS Oversight Committee. One is by virtue of the office they, they hold, respective of the position. You have five names, Roberto Portella, Kip Clemmons, James Arthur, George Bell, and Bryant Waters. You then have the reappointment of a regular member, not tied back to the respective positions they hold, but Nancy Phelps is being recommended to be, to be reappointed to a three-year term.
So, move.
Second.
Actually, that's a regular, that's a first term that she would be, yeah, I'm sorry.
A first term for her, right. Okay, let's vote, please. Okay, and our next item is commissioners' comments. We'll start with you, Ms. Hammond.
Yes, ma'am. Madam Chairman, I appreciate you chairing the meeting today, but one statement you was making about, to the sheriff, about salaries educationally versus law enforcement that I disagree on. And educational salaries paid by the state of North Carolina, and law enforcement for the people, citizens of Pitt County paid for by the county. And that's one of our top priorities is, both of them are top priorities that we chose and voted to have. One was education, and the other one was public safety.
Okay, the only other thing I'll say is that we do have over three hundred people on the payroll for Pitt County schools that are funded with county funds. We can't ever lose sight of that either. Okay, Ms. Williams, comment?
No comments today, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Coulson.
I've said my fill, thank you.
Okay, Ms. Owens?
Yes, ma'am, I've got two items I'd like to comment about. As you come in on our show boulevard, I think we might have talked about this before, but from Green County up into Allen Road on two sixty-four, you can go on the other side in Green County, you can get up to Allen Road, you see there Greenville. It's the worst I see anywhere. Paper, grass not cut, we've talked about this, we probably don't have anything to do with it, but that's the showboat to Greenville and to the university, to the med school, to all of it. If we can have any influence in having that reviewed, it would be good. Second thing, I want to commend the Pitt Community College Board from evaluating and approving an increase in their tuition or payment for courses. I think, as I read in the paper, they increased it about five times. For many years, it had not been increased. And at this day in time, when education is, is such a price, that I think it's good that they consider the fact that the person seeking the education are part of the burden. And at this day in time, I think parents fall short on that. That's one reason we have so much problem, because parents do not stress setting illustration by having a job themselves. You don't set an example. But this that the Community College Board of Trustees recently did, I think is in keeping with what we're gonna have to do all over in order to afford what we think we need, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Owens. Mr. Glenn?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a good item to report. Our finance director, Dwayne Holder, and I sit on ECBH Board of Director, and they, they had a good write-up in the paper on Friday, that they would be the first in the state of North Carolina to use a, a new mental health program, which will provide a, a new model of care in early childhood intervention and emotional and development health services for low-income population. And this model is called Child First, and I think it's something, something to be commended that ECBH should take in that initiative to, to look into the low-income population and with this new model of care. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for sharing your grand son of us today.
Thank you, Madam Chairman, for taking over so seamlessly, but you should always remember the old adage, it's the squeaky chair that gets the grease.
Maybe I should have kept that one. That's why I made it over here.
I move that we adjourn, thank you.
My second.
Okay, let's vote for adjournment, please.
Beth, since you're gonna be switching, you might want to switch chairs back. No, I'm gonna keep this if the squeaky chair gets the, you know, I'm gonna keep it right over here. [laughter]